Just to the fire of the United States of America, into the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Seems like Monday to me, but I guess it's actually Tuesday, so. The agenda here, oh, good enough. All right, we did review the agenda, anybody have any conflicts? Any changes, otherwise we'll call the. Reading of the approval of the minutes, please, Madam Auditor.
February sixth, twenty twenty four, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Jean Hayden Chair presiding. Members present were Dozark, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossburg. Member absent was Schultz. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. The board approved the resignation Laurie Weed, Clerk of Charter Oak Township, and the resignation of Randy Weed, Trustee of Charter Oak Township. Motion was made by Rossburg, seconded by Dozark, to approve Hungary Canyon's Alliance Amendment Number One to Project Agreement Number Twenty-two dash three, LC thirty-seven, Nedermeier Culver. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the termination of the Midwest Compliance Association contract. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Rossburg, to approve the HIPAA compliance program with ISAC. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the replacement of the heat pump for the jail basement. Motion passed unanimously. Collin Johnson County Attorney had a discussion with the board about possible pipeline ordinance. Motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozark, to approve the award of project BRS County twenty-four, one thirty-one and sixty dash twenty-four, concrete box culvert on County Road E sixteen to Dixon, construction in the amount of eight hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars and six cents. Motion passed unanimously. On motion due, we seconded the board adjourned at twelve fifteen PM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
All right, everybody's agree with that? Any additions or subtracts to it? Otherwise, the reading stands as approved. Alrighty, so reports from the Supervisors and their standing committees. I'm assuming Kyle, you probably didn't have a whole lot going on.
I did have, I aligned with one meeting last night, just working over the budget and got that approved for publication and. What meeting did you say you had? E nine one one, okay, yep.
Nothing really stood out in there?
No, no, but funds that are generated through the state fund, so. But we got a purchase computer.
Are ya?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Okay.
Yep, so that one's getting returned then?
Yeah, yeah.
Nice.
Yep.
You can do that through Jake then?
I, I assume, I guess, I don't know. I did tell him, purchase, get a computer purchased and so he can get that little backup to his assessor's office, so. There's no problem.
Who's the head?
It's, well, I'm the chairman, yep. And then it's the mayor, the mayors or the mayors appointed of each community. And Sheriff and EMA, Greg Miller, so.
They're all voting members?
They're all voting members and then Dwayne is the, our contracted E nine one coordinator.
He's gonna continue to do that?
Yep, yep, as long as we let it, so.
Can I ask?
What's the fee, what are we paying for that?
Forty-five hundred dollars, a quarter.
Okay.
What's the difference between his position and Greg's position, what is?
Here he has Emergency Management and this is nine one one. There's some cross in there, I'm sure, but. It's, it's, I think it's the state statute that sets up the nine one one board as well as the EMA, so.
I just never asked that question before, so.
The nine one one is the one that takes off your phone calls or something like that, generates.
Right, cell phones, landlines.
Is the hospital on that board? They represent? I don't believe so, they got a seat on there. I don't, they might, they have, they don't come very often, but I do remember now something that there was a, yes, I think they are on there. There was a fight two or three, four years ago to get Representative of the Hospital on there, but I, I think we. We did that, they'll show up and I don't think they showed up since, so. You mentioned that's.
That was through the whole radio system and all that.
Yeah, I think that's where that argument started, that they needed the seat at the table and.
Kind of when they were changing the numbers and all sorts of stuff like that, yeah.
For whatever reason. They're busy out there, if you may, they just can't make it.
It's.
And I got a yes on a meeting on Friday, up in Cherokee. That's about it.
All right, well, thank you very much. We'll just go right down the line here, what do you have?
You want to talk about the county farm, I guess. I gotta talk about, or do you want to wait, we can talk about a week or two, I guess.
I guess it's on the agenda.
Yeah. Wesco meeting last night. They are, had some training on, all the board members are going to get a.
iPad?
An iPad, thank you. I don't even know what they are called, so it wasn't a chance to be running one correctly, huh?
They're handy.
But we're all gonna get one, so make it a little less paper. There's a lot of paper that we have and it's nice to have it. The system they're gonna use is kind of like Dropbox, and so at least you have access to.
You could teach me something about Dropbox.
Information, it's easy to find it instead of trying to look back on, you know, paper and trying to keep all that paper stuff. But the other thing with Wesco, which I saw and read through your notes, is I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass this around. This was their year-end report and they, it's called an impact report is what they did this year. And if, I mean, I just recommend that if you read through it, if you want to just read the message from the executive director, that kind of gives you the highlights for the year, so I'll pass that around. But one thing that they're, that's happening with Wesco this year is their finances are not coming along, I guess, as projected as they thought that they would, that they're down thirteen, they have thirteen people that they have thought were gonna be there for the whole year, so they projected the income having those thirteen people. And Wesco has aging people that they serve are getting older. And so they had six of those thirteen actually ended up needing care that they could no longer provide, and they ended up in nursing homes. And they had two brothers that left to go live with their mom and they had another couple people leave unexpectedly. And they had two people that left because Wesco did their job and got them so they could move out on their own. And so they're working on getting back those thirteen different people. And they've got two people that'll, that'll be coming in soon, but they're, they're still projecting.
Thanks.
Increase in income for the year, just not near what they had thought. I mean, they've got, we voted last night, they've got one point seven million in cash that we're gonna put in CDs with Crawford County Bank, so they've got an additional million dollars in cash on top of that, so their financial position is strong. It's just not as projected for the year. The other thing I think that you should know is they use, they talked about their health insurance increase for the year is eight point one eight. They are with Holmes Murphy and have been for over a decade. And they said that they are the best people in the world to work with, that if, he said, if we needed, if I needed four people from Holmes Murphy to be here tomorrow morning to make a presentation, I would have four of them.
Score?
Right, I didn't know that they were with Holmes Murphy until I saw that in their, in their report last night. And I thought the eight point one eight increase is reasonable, they're with Wellmark Blue Cross Shield. And the other thing is they did receive a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar ARPA grant from the federal government to build or buy a new home.
Oh.
So that's encouraging. Other than that, I guess that.
Did they talk anymore, because it was brought up at our statewide supervisor's meeting about homes needing to be brought from five down to four.
So it was brought up?
And we voiced our concerns.
Okay.
To Kelly Garcia.
Two, okay, were they aware of it?
Yep.
Yeah. I mean.
Kelly was.
We discussed that again last night. And it's, I mean, I don't know if a bill or if a legislature has anything to do with it. To me, it's a bureaucratic thing that's coming from the Department of Justice. And it all stems from Glenwood facility and. Glenwood, they closed down. And so when Glenwood wanted to start back up, they were doing five, six people in a, I think as high as many as eight people, you know, housing them together. And that's when the Department of Justice came in and said, we're not gonna allow you to do that, Glenwood, you gotta go to four. And as a matter of fact, we're gonna make the whole state of Iowa go to four. And I think the legal term was a dissent decree that they wanted the governor to sign, saying, yeah, this is our problem, we'll fix it this way, and the governor's like, I ain't signing that. I'm letting, there are all of my other locations, they can decide what is right for them. And so as long as the governor doesn't sign, I think everything's gonna stay as it is. But the federal government could come back and say, oh, fine, Governor, if you're not gonna sign, we're gonna reduce some Medicaid payments to you until you do sign. It's kind of, I think, where the governor would feel like maybe they need to do something. But like I said, to me, that's more of a bureaucratic thing than it is something that you can fix with legislation, but I'm not a hundred percent positive.
That's kind of what I gathered from Director Garcia as well, that they were dragging their feet on it because they realized the impact of housing shortages and the struggle of what we would go through.
I mean, Wesco's financial plan that they have, you know, moving forward, long-range planning, all is with five-person homes. Five-person homes are profitable, four-person homes are not.
Right.
And she, she did mention, do you remember her saying the, the term institutionalized settings? They're trying to, that's the reason they're trying to get away from the five, six, seven, eight, they don't want an institutionalized setting for these people to be in. They want it to be more home-like.
Just change the name then.
They're missing the point.
Well, they're missing the point that these local people, I mean, run it.
Yeah, and they're like, those houses are like family, and everybody has their, their jobs that they do and they're in like families and they.
And that's what Clay always says, is that these five people are family.
That's right.
So which one, which one of you guys want to go in and tell them that their brother or sister is leaving? And which one of them is gonna volunteer to leave, none of them are, so they're gonna make one of them leave their family and.
And go where? And go where?
For me, I, I feel like it's still, one more of those deals where it's, we get it in a rural setting, it works for us. You could probably go to an urban setting where they shove fifteen people into a complex.
Illinois, they, right, place it there as many as twelve.
Yeah, and, and they're trying to dictate that which affects us and we're not, it's apples to oranges, it's not the same.
Yeah, you know, Kelly Garcia spoke for over an hour.
Long time.
A long time, after a while, it got to be a lot, a lot, a lot of.
Can you imagine a bunch of supervisors getting off target?
Yeah. It, it, I had questions, but I thought.
So it's Kelly, female, male?
Female.
And she is.
From Texas.
The head of HHS.
Director.
Oh, the head of HHS.
Rode her up from Texas because they saw that our system was broken and they thought she could fix it. And there was one of the, I didn't catch the county, it was in the back, that they had a building set in the empty all winter, heating it, staff, but they couldn't get it certified and, you know, just the same thing that wouldn't see. And she's like, well, we just wanna make sure that everything is ready to go, that these people are safe and, you know, but it's so hard to get people certified and it's so hard to really know what the evidence-based practice qualifications are. They're still working the bugs out on that, taking the, the regions and making fewer regions.
And that's, you know, that's something else that was, was brought up is that. In today's society, we're having more mental health issues than we are developmental issues. And Wesco is more kind of designed for developmental, but they're thinking of doing more training perhaps in the mental health side to get more of those patients, but it's, it's the fine line to walk because mental health issues, you know, makes it harder on staff sometimes if they're not trained properly. And you don't wanna have too many mental health patients and then the staff starts to leave because they don't know how to deal or handle them and now you lose, you know, so it's, it's just, there's a fine line to walk and it's hard to find, you know, a perfect place to be sometimes.
Mental health is, you know, people are going to talk to somebody to get answers and to feel better. And if that person doesn't know how to de-escalate the situation and it just takes that certain person that train, you can't just put any person to deal with that because it could make the situation worse if you don't know how to get on their level and how to, how to talk to them. You get somebody that's a little hot-headed in there with somebody that's a little stubborn because of their mental illness and, you know, it's, it's just not as easy as one thing. So if you find a great employee that deals with these people, you gotta, you gotta keep them and it, it's just, I don't, I don't know if the state has all the answers exactly yet. And I still believe that while they're working it out, these are human beings that eventually may fall between that crack. We've talked about it since day one and I just wonder how many really have that we don't know about, so. I don't know, it's, but she did talk for, we, we actually, I'll take my little minute, you know.
That's all I got.
We were gonna talk about eminent domain, that's one of the things that was actually on the agenda. And I got up at four thirty so I could drive down there and be there, you know, just because I really wanted to, to hear that. And we didn't get to because she wanted to have the, the ears of the supervisors, so she took the entire time, which, I don't know, I was just waiting for eminent domain and that didn't happen, so Dave, you're up.
Jay, yeah, it was kind of a busy week. Did get to meet with the governor, could not get Jean in because she's capped how many we could have.
No females.
Actually, right, it wasn't a females.
Both of us are gender balanced, she should have taken me.
She was. Yeah. Anyways, there was nine of us that got to meet with her. The three topics that we got to discuss was property taxes, eminent domain, and behavioral health. Property taxes, kind of one of those deals and it was, we voiced our concerns, we said, hey, we're filling the less revenue because of these changes and it was, well, from the constituents and the, you know, the people in Iowa want lower taxes and suck it up.
That's what Jason said.
They should have lowered sales taxes.
So it was, we didn't get very far there. I mean, at least you heard us. Eminent domain, we discussed that a little bit. Same thing, she just said I have a lot of things to weigh. Said there was a few, her, there's some bills out there to address it, whether that they would go anywhere, she didn't say that she would sign it or not. I guess, we brought up, and Don Cass from Plymouth County, he was very good about, said, you know, our, our concern, or his concerns for all of Iowa, but especially in Plymouth County, you know, they have a lot of wind turbines and a lot of wind turbines that have halted production because they're waiting on the ruling from IUB with pipelines. And so if this happens, if this goes through and eminent domain is used, where does it stop? Their feeling is, wind turbines, solar fields, transmission lines are gonna follow suit and go to court and say, we wanna use eminent domain as well.
Yep, it could very well happen.
Kind of a slippery slope if you open up that Pandora's box. So she took that to note. Then the third thing we talked about, we discussed a little bit, is behavioral health districts and that. And our biggest concern we brought up was the advisory role. You know, we said, we have no, no teeth to what happens on, on the ground and just being an advisor doesn't mean much. And she was, out of all things, I thought, more receptive to saying, well, I, I'm not opposed to having, you know, local supervisors being a part of this governance board and helping with that makeup, not quite sure how that governance board is gonna be formulated. But I feel like that was a bright spot as far as her hearing us supervisors to say that we are losing local control and when you put the service providers in charge.
Forty-nine percent are supervisors.
You're like a box in a penthouse.
They're making their own raises, they're.
And I think the bigger picture is, of course, to combine a lot of these services and streamline how behavioral health is addressed. We just said, don't, don't leave us out, you know, our voice is important, we're the boots on the ground for a lot of these areas. And I think she did take that away well, in fact, asked to meet with us quarterly, whether it happens or not, just to keep bringing up where we're at at a local.
Same group.
Same group. So then, so that was good. And then right after that, since we were at the Capitol, I sat in on transportation, subcommittee hearing. And that had to do with the motor graders being trained. And we really didn't get it, they didn't ask any of the crowd to put any input in because it was a subcommittee, has to get to committee before more input is put in, but it did pass out of subcommittee, but I did grab a number of legislators there and say, we're already doing it. Most counties, you know, this is another one of those instances that counties have ICAP, ICAP strongly requires and requests training of some sort, we wanna train our motor graders, we're doing it, this is just a added regulation and.
I just see it, I'm not saying it's wrong, but when they require training for all volunteer firefighters, I was in favor of that because, I mean, volunteer firefighters get injured or just, there goes a panic firefighter, but they dump it now so much that the training can be done by your local fire department as long as they sign off on it, so. You know, and I, I would imagine, I don't know how they would ever try to. I don't know, there's twelve, I, I don't know how you'd ever.
I mean, was there a discussion in the subcommittee that you could see why they were? No, but there's discussion afterwards or with, just with some of the legislators. Probably stems back to some people that were upset about how their roads were being maintained. And they went to Farm Bureau and said, we need a state law that makes counties have to train their motor graders.
They're gonna talk about, so you do train, that's operator X. So Farm Bureau, he meets all the requirements.
I think Farm Bureau was mine.
And then he still don't, he still blades the, he or she still blades, what, what's the penalty for? Are they, and are they gonna give us money to pay these motor grader professionals a higher salary either, what?
Like Paul said, some people get it and some people, you know.
There's operators and there's drivers. I mean, we've all been to school and every teacher we had had a degree, not every teacher we had is good. Right, the doctor and the doctor, if they had a class or they're the bottom of the class.
Yeah.
Well, the point, I mean, and I tried to bring it up to many representative as I could, where was it? Lewis County, that Lyle Brain was there, he was engineer, just trying to plead the case that this is unneeded.
Something needed. Well, they just added cost to the gallery.
They did. And then what happens, you know, if you need to get that person out doing the job and they haven't had their training yet because the training class isn't until, they start in, you know, December and the training class, you know, yeah.
I mean, it's just.
So it's, I guess, to be continued.
The Farm Bureau should have told them, call your local county supervisor.
Right.
If you're not happy with your roads.
Right.
Call your county engineer.
But then at the end of the day, at the Capitol, I thought this was quite interesting, I think Terry was really, is gonna get excited about this. They had a raccoon bill.
Oh, gosh, I missed that.
Oh, yeah, so out of Environmental Health Subcommittee, they wanna pass a raccoon bill where they cut, or putting a bounty on raccoons for five dollars.
Tails or feet or what?
Tails.
Oh, tails are nice.
So then I was thinking of Terry's behalf and I said, well, can you?
Tuesday mornings, when you guys are here, y'all can collect them.
So I told them to add gophers and beavers and bring it all to the auditor. And I think that's gonna pass.
I heard a chuckle back there, I'm just not gonna say anything about that.
Raccoons are a threat to our environmental health. And it's like, this is what we're discussing?
What about skunks, I mean, let's go full bore, why not?
You could bring a tail on, it'd still be alive.
Technically.
Be a bunch of bob-tailed raccoons there and I'll order a new breed.
Then we can get beat next year and.
They probably will without feet too, I suppose.
It was supposed to be turned into the DNR.
No, we don't have a bounty on raccoons.
Okay, because I love raccoons are such a big. When I was a kid, it was, when I was a kid, it was pocket hooves and I had to bring in the two, two front claws. You got paid a dime or a quarter there, right?
No one used to collect.
And I'd think I would bring them to the auditor's office.
So I lobbied for you, Terry, I tried to get him to bring the.
That was awesome, that was great.
That's why you're my favorite.
So if Martha County has a bounty, but Carroll County doesn't, do, do we care that they're from Carroll County?
We need to, we need to microchip their, ours, so we know which ones are ours.
I think that's valid, you know.
So if that's a state deal, that'd be a statewide deal.
Right.
So it doesn't matter.
Well, once again, I said, here's another thing, you're wasting your time on that.
Yeah.
At a county level, we can do it or not do it if we wanted to, you know, if we feel like a problem.
Right.
Shelby County has a, has a bounty on beavers, we don't, we don't feel it's a problem, or raccoons, you know, if we wanted to, we could do that.
And OMG.
But, I mean, most farmers, I know if they're a problem, they eradicate the problem themselves without any incentive at all.
You're exactly right.
Exactly, I mean, they identify.
Because even the first aren't worth anything, rarely.
So, and just interesting. So they're just interesting. I mean, it is, you know, funnel week is this week, so you get all that crazy stuff. Wow.
I mean, that's the same exact reason why we never really followed through with our beaver bounty, because if they are a problem, the farmer usually pays to get rid of them.
Right.
And the only time it would ever affect the county was if there was a problem in our right way. So why would we, the county or the state pay a problem when it's out in the middle of your field? Not the taxpayer's responsibility, that's who you own that ground, you take care of it. How do you see that?
Exactly.
So. Very interesting.
So then after I left that.
I think they're building a big old hut on the middle of the road. I mean, that's one thing, but.
So after I left the Capitol, then I headed to our Board of Directors meeting. Our Jamie Lucas did give us legislative updates. Um, granted, we were with him throughout the day, the day anyways. On one of them, eminent domain, Representative Holt did have. H A, H A S B Bill six oh eight, which addressed eminent domain. ISAC is registered undecided on that, even though eminent domain is one of the priorities. Only because we want to wait and see how the details play out in that bill. Part of it is it brings, a landowner can have, can petition. Eminent domain, if it is used, then it will go back to, actually, I don't understand, this is why we're sifting or vetting this out, that it goes back to Polk County District Court. Or the legislature to decide. So like I said, we're undecided on that one because I'm not quite sure how that plays out. Cause if it, if the legislature could now say, we don't want eminent domain, they could just have a bill now, but if it brings it back to them anyways.
Right.
It just, some questions on that one. The one that we did register for was um, the Senate File. Two zero nine seven, which is back to your ninety percent landowner participation. It addresses setbacks, compaction, things like that. Um, gives more empowerment to the counties on eminent domain. Jack Sewer, Seaword, he was on the Board of Directors. We did vote for it. Um. He did make the point that he goes, I'm gonna vote for it because it's give and take, we're moving forward on being for something, but he goes, really? To me, eminent domain and property tax or property rights shouldn't be set by a percentage. They're either all or nothing, you know.
Good point.
He would have rather seen it at a hundred percent. You need a hundred percent, you can't invoke eminent domain, which I agree. It's just, you get something on the books to try to address it or you draw that line in the sand.
Yep. Yeah. Now, now we go for all and get nothing.
Right.
Or get something.
So ISAC did register for that one just because it's more favorable to the counties. Um, we did talk about Medicaid, Medicaid waivers. Um, trying to expand the waiver coverage through Medicaid to cover our county jail costs. Which would be great.
That'd be awesome.
That, working towards that.
Did that get out of subcommittee?
I'm not for sure.
Okay.
They're just still working on, they just noted it. Um, and of course, behavioral health, we're still talking about that. I, I do think behavioral health deal. The the really good bright spot of it is the combination of mental health and substance abuse, because we know that they go hand in hand. And that if you can combine those services, I think you're gonna reach a lot more people. And just a prime example. M R H C has substance abuse waiting, have a waiting list. Can't address mental health, I get mental health funding currently. So we're turning away people that have a substance abuse issue, but it's labeled mental health. Primarily, where now we can address that.
That's always been the problem, getting them into acute help, you know, if they're on drugs and they're having episodes and they can't go into this center.
Right.
So.
And then it, I mean, it was brought up the bed space and Lon Ty had asked about the juvenile detention.
Yep.
Which is a very good question. Um, Kelly Garcia had talked about like with the Yes Center or. Central Iowa, where they're saying, hey, we're running out of bed space, but Des Moines don't want to take those certain. Patients and they're sitting with empty beds. So I think that was noted by them. Um, then the other bill that was brought up was the comp board bill. And. There was. There are only one, uh, you gotta look back. I think there was two of them. The one bill, I didn't write that, I didn't catch the number. Took away the comp board and put it back in the supervisor's hands, but then it turned around and said that. It dictates the percentage increase by CPI and tell like. So it takes the comp board away because of supervisor's hand, but then tells supervisor how to do it, right? Which takes all control away all completely. So that one, uh, actually, I think both of them were registered against. Um, and the whole thing is.
And if it was different than the CPI amount, it had to start the year that or at the next election.
And that's right.
Win election or the, you know, that's when it wouldn't, that's when that increase would take effect. You have to wait till election year.
So it was just.
So if we wanted to give someone a bigger raise than CPI, you couldn't do it.
Based on inflation up to three percent. It just, it was a.
Oh, up to three percent. Nice.
Back the auditor, back the treasurer legislation.
We're just. It really just. Control back wave ultimately altogether. And. And really, when you look at the voting of ISAC Supervisor's affiliate. And ISAC Supervisor affiliate is split. Half of the supervisors statewide want to keep the comp board and maybe just tweak how it's ran. The other half voted for complete abolishing it and starting over. So within our own supervisor affiliate, there's. Difference of.
But I think some counties, you know, rather than they making the decision if they bring in a something that's not acceptable, they make them go back to work and do it again. And bring back the answers to why you're, the justifications. I know that's how they do it in Johnson County. They. They send in an eighteen percent raise. They say, that's not what we want. You guys keep.
I could have an argument against that part. I mean, I don't know if there's a perfect way to do it, because if there was a supervisor that had a grief against. One of the other elected officials, they're gonna say, no, that's, send it back.
Well, that is, that is the reason, you know, because of the dynamics of it, that they want that third party to represent and then give recommendation and.
Right.
But, you know, unfortunately, well, whatever, in Crawford County, it's, everybody gets the same. And I, I think that that's kind of where that went a little bit.
Well, that's, that's just average.
This year it's the same. It hasn't always been the same.
No, well, as long as I've been here, it's been the same.
Oh, no. I mean, I don't know if it's ever been exactly the same. I mean, sheriff was.
Oh, no, I mean.
Forty percent that one year, the second floor was different. I mean.
Everybody on the second floor is.
County attorney got a bigger raise than the second, than the rest. I mean, I always thought that they were doing the right thing. The back the blue legislation really just threw a screwball the whole process. This is how I see it.
I was referring only to the second floor.
Well, right, and we've tried to fix that, but. And I, I do feel like this year, our, our comp board did come in and they did their work and they showed where they came from.
They did fabulous.
And I think they did what the comp board was truly designed to do. But so let's, we'll wait and see how that turns out as well.
But they also have the, the opinion that, well, we're gonna make it really high so because then the supervisors can do something. And I just wish they just give us what they think it should be rather than.
Right. Um, we did have a legislator forum during our lunch hour at the statewide meeting. Um, I think the supervisors pushed the legislators that were there. Uh, they were.
They were, they seem like some pretty, uh.
It was Tom Shipley, Jesse Green, Bergman.
The young guy on the end.
With Jesse Green.
Hey.
Um.
I did, I jotted it down, but I.
Pushed them pretty hard on the House File seven eighteen and property change, tax changes and. The thing that. It's kind of frustrating for myself as I listen to it. That, they all said, we recognize your struggles and your challenges with your budgets and how you, what you need to provide and these things. And we'll try to look at unfunded mandates and maybe streamline some of them or help out with them. But then again, I looked it up, every single senator voted for it. Every single, I'm talking about everybody. Every single one but one representative voted for it. So they all voted for it. And now it's, well, we feel your pain and we're getting it, we're hearing it too, but.
I think it's thirsty.
I do, I mean, I.
It was kind of, they heard what we were saying, but they still have to do what they have to do. It's maybe over. Yeah. Yeah. But they were entertaining. I thought they, you know.
So at the end of the day, you were only one vote too.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. They, they gave, they, they listened. I thought they were listening. They had some good explanations for, you know, some of the concerns. Um.
I do appreciate them coming. I mean, they didn't have to be there. They heard what we had to say.
Yep.
I mean, it's not an easy room to walk into. You walk into a supervisor pissed off about, you know, our budget reductions because of these bills. Um, especially when it's on our back and not on theirs, but yet they decided it.
I sat in the back of the room. There was more rumbling back there than in the front.
Like going to church, huh?
Well, I, I just took the first seat I could find because I didn't want to make a big deal about getting up front. So I just sat back with, uh. Made some new friends. It was just like that.
But I, I, I think there was some tough questions asked. You know, Sandy Looney asked about some of the behavioral health and mental health and she didn't, she didn't hold back and, you know, some of that needed to be voiced.
Yep, did. Uh, she's very, well, it it's that forty-nine percent. That, that just does not make any sense. Why, uh, people who are not elected are making decisions on races for county employees. It doesn't even really make any sense for, uh, like the CEOs to still be county employees. They're working for the state of Iowa. Doing the wishes of the state of Iowa, but yet they're still county employees. And I think that that's, as you've got the people who are running the, the programs. Have the bigger voting power on exactly what's gonna go and the supervisors who have to come back and answer to people. Um, really, they could all vote or whatever, but they're not gonna win.
There was some concern from the state of why our current regions are sitting on like twenty-eight million dollars. That was brought up, and I think that's even more addressed with the governor, but they, that they were sitting on, which is hypocritical, that these regions are sitting on too much cash.
Yeah.
But yet the state is on.
Yeah.
People that live in glass houses. How many billions the state on, sitting on?
Billions.
Anyways, and part of the regions in their defense are saying, we're short-staffed.
Yep.
We're not, you know, we would, would have that extra money, but we can't find employees. Or if we do find employees, a lot of times they're being cherry picked from other regions because they better pay, whatever. So there's a shortage of employees that isn't spending that down. The other thing is just the carryover, you know, you need some to operate throughout the year. Um, it is gonna get really interesting though with the new behavioral health regions and the map.
It's gonna be very interesting.
It's gonna be put out to an R F D.
It's the new map.
So the current regions technically are gonna have to compete with each other.
Yes, I think.
Apply for their own jobs. I mean, they're gonna have to apply.
Right.
Yeah.
And they might get beat out by a primality.
Right.
It, it's, uh, Director Garcia.
And it was still be on the hunt for it. You know, it's a primary.
Right.
So. Had, shouldn't answer for everything.
Well, and I don't, this was brought up as well, like the state took it over, so they said, well, we're funding it. But even at the state level, it's still all our taxpayer dollars.
That, well, that happened last year. We went to see the governor. We brought that up, if you remember. And she said, uh, it's our money. We run the show, so we're gonna do it our way. You know, remember that conversation last year already. And so, but it, the rollout has just been so complicated and, you know, for, you know, we had that, uh. Our building up in Sioux City set empty for how long staffed, but nobody could get in because of the five questions that they asked before you get in. Either you were, you know, too violent, you were on drugs, you, you know. You got turned away. Where did they go? To the hospital or to jail, you know, because they can't get into the centers that they need to go in. Uh, that has kind of helped in our region, but they're still having it in other regions where you got buildings that and they're eating it. We got older people just in case somebody can get in. And that is just a waste of great taxpayer money. They just have these set empty, but all in all, it was, the day went by really fast. You know, you, uh, a lot of kept the speakers going and, uh, got out of there, but, uh, yeah. Talked to a lot of different people, how, how things are going in their counties and everybody's feeling okay, so.
Jason Vanderhaal, Rosiola is our new ISAC's president. He's, I think he did a good job.
Mm hmm.
During the meeting.
Yep.
I mean, another note, I think it is public, how Bill Peterson is going to be retiring from ISAC. So the executive committee will go for it on a, application search.
How long has he been there?
Seven, at least seventy-four.
What's your few years?
Eighties, somewhere, I, I think forty-seven.
Eighty-seven, yes, no.
He's seen some changes.
Yeah. So that, I mean, certainly the county's interest for a long time.
Yep.
Who didn't take their book?
Everybody forgot. Yeah, I wanna now throw it on the guys.
Yeah, that's not here.
Exactly.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Don't, you gotta take action on that.
Yep, yep, yep. Easy.
I've just made it like they're not.
Rack off party. Um, the other thing, I guess, old business.
Them, how that.
Passed around.
You can do it, I guess.
The Admins Group, especially Rose, would you skip that, Craig?
Yeah, fully here. No, no.
No, that, that's the, that's the administrative group for Second Day Rose that Jean and I had met with to discuss.
Okay.
Their wage increase. They are not a union. They just came in, they do that yearly to discuss what they would like to see as an increase. Plead your case if you'd like. Um. Maybe we're asking for a five percent increase. We took it home last week and you go, let's just kind of maul on it, chew it, chew it about. Um. It's not on our agenda today to take action. Sometime we'll have to make a decision on, on that and Paul's contract.
Yep. And the compensation board.
Yep.
Or is, or is the non-union based on their position? I mean, on word or title, I guess I should say? Is that some, yeah, define?
Yep. This group is broke out separate from the other negotiating.
Right. Yeah.
Heads.
Either they're non-union, they're under, they're discretionary, I guess, I would say. They're under Paul's management, so they're discretionary. Oh, if you don't see that, I got one. You got, everybody's got one. Okay.
Don't throw that away though. I really have two copies.
Oh, what's your?
I can make more.
You only have two? I was scribbled all over mine.
That's fine, fine. Dave and I can share. Um.
So I don't know how you guys feel, but I wouldn't mind moving forward and making the decision on Paul's contract, the admin group, even our comp board, if we were. Willing to put it on the agenda next week.
Yeah, I think we can move.
Yeah.
Yep.
We'll put it on next week.
And we gotta get those three things checked out, partner, to do this.
Might ask Paul, he might want the two on his agenda. You know what I'm saying?
Well, let's ask him when he comes.
Yeah.
I like this, you know, kind of set somewhat precedent on some, on some of these regions already, you know. That's how I feel about it. I still, I do like the cash instead of the percentage deal. Seems to have been working on about everything this year, so. I think we should just keep it rolling out of that.
Do we want to try to get Amy in here real quick since she's waiting?
Yeah.
Like, come on up. That way we can kind of keep you from.
Morning, Amy.
Morning, thank you. There's the semi annual report.
Oh.
Appreciate you coming in. Got a text from.
Get. Oh.
Have a seat if you want to.
Anything we need a few?
I'm filling in for Sherry because she's home sick.
Okay.
She didn't think she should expose you guys.
Thank you for reminding. Sent me a text. I said, take care.
Yep, that's what we said too, so.
That ties.
Oh.
So nothing that jumped out that we need to, we were.
Not the, not the Sherry and I saw, so.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry. We will. I'm gonna fix something afterwards, so thank you so much for bringing it in.
No problem.
I knew you were gonna.
Morning.
Morning, Paul.
Another nice day?
Fabulous.
Couple there. There you go. Well, you gotta the approval of them here today, a couple of many, you know, but, uh, the, um, great crew might start up next week.
Is it?
I said, uh, I don't think there's any frost. So if, uh, I mean, the conditions supposed to be fifty degrees in the fifties next week, and so we might be moving back out by or not. So we've got a free pass this spring. The roads are, I think, great shape. You guys have been out on many of them. I know you kids probably have been, but.
I took, I took a drive with one of your employees.
Yeah, yeah. And so I mean, they're, the last few years have been fantastic. I know the first year I started about this time of the year was, you know, we, it snowed on, on election day that year in November. And then I remember it was snow all winter. We worked twenty-eight days in a row the one time and, uh, and then went from snow to mud.
So two thousand one?
Yeah. Yeah, it was bad. It was really bad. So, so this is kind of a nice, nice spring. Cause they're in really good shape. Anyhow, uh, so the guys are, well, right now they're hauling some crushed concrete. I got, there's an item down there a little later, but uh, we bought some of that crushed product from Ten Point. Basically took the whole pile. Really good stuff. And then, um, we, we got the pile from, uh, Concrete Supply. They're hauling that out today. Really good stuff as well. And just kind of as a comparison, you know, when you look at the cost of materials. So like a one-inch roadstone, uh, which would be kind of a comparable material for us to get that hauled in from our Marietta is in that thirty-dollar ton range. And, uh, we get this crush for nine twenty-five. We pay them two, two dollars for the material. So it costs us eleven twenty-five a ton. And the material that we have out at the dome is just stuff that we've hauled in from building sites and patching and whatever. Uh, so that's pretty economical. And then stuff from Ten Point, we paid them five dollars a ton over whatever their crushing charge were. So fourteen, so you know, at least half price.
Yep.
Or less than, um, what we'd be paying for a product that's coming out of a quarry. So it's pretty, pretty good value.
A little bit better than quarry stone. They don't break down.
Well, the stuff out of Concrete Supply, I mean, that's just concrete that they bought back and dumped out of their trucks. Uh, the other stuff has, uh, you know, some asphalt sometimes mixed in with it. So it makes really good children material. So recycling.
Recycling.
At its best. Uh, so that's what the guys are working on, the bridge crew. Um, they're just, you know, getting stuff ready and except if the weather continues like this, we're probably gonna go out and start, start up again.
Carve my footprint. We're recycling.
That's right. Yeah, that's right. Reusing. So, um, item four, um, the, uh, we're ready to approve the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for that box covered up on E sixteen, so.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second?
All right. Further discussion. Now I'll call a vote. I'll favor I.
Alright.
You oppose, same sign. Chair votes I. It's been approved.
So you'll just have to sign that bond and then I electronically sign the contract. Our members, we used to have to do that. It's kind of complicated. So they've, they've streamlined that and it actually, the whole process works really well. It's all done electronically now. And, uh, you know, you just gotta make sure that you push the right buttons and that things fall into place at the right time. So so we'll, uh, soon as I get back down there, I'll electronically sign that and then the DOT approves it. Then we can, we can visit with the contractor and figure out when he wants to start the project. And, um, hopefully soon.
Yeah.
Well.
Weather submitting.
Uh, the next item is the dust control. If you remember, you know, we kind of have multiple dust control applicators. And so we have an agreement that they sign agreeing to kind of follow certain guidelines and rules. So, uh, we've sent them out to all of the ones that applied last year. There were four different applicators and it actually worked out okay. Um, but, you know, trying to make sure that they get it all done during that timeframe is really important. So we don't have blade operators running around and trying to chase these things all over.
How do you assign with multiple dust control?
Well, they all have.
Who gets what miles?
They, they, uh, well, the, the public, the public.
Call, they get, just here's our list, call in who you want.
It's on our webpage that they're approved supplier with all their contact information and, and their, the prices, their agreement and everything. You just pick one of them and work with them. And then, then they send us that. Part of the agreement is they have to send us the list of whoever it is that they're applying for or, you know, applying on their property or their, their growth. Uh, by the twenty-fifth of April, and then they have to apply during the third, the period, the thirteenth to the twenty-fourth of May, and then the twelfth through the twenty-third of August. So that way we kind of narrow that up a little bit, get the list and our guys can get the areas ready.
Is there one applicator that gets more than the other or is it kind of evenly distributed among?
Um, the public, yeah, the public.
Do they send out a letter to them and say what they're gonna do? Do you suppose these landlords are getting four letters from everybody? Is it?
Could be.
Could be?
Yeah.
I personally don't get one.
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, and they can go on the webpage.
Didn't I remember?
So it's all public information. So.
Does the county have to do some prep work?
We want to blade the road, make sure it's smooth and, you know, if, if they need a material applied, you know, we try to get that out at least a week or two ahead of time to get it kind of bladed in. But yeah, we have to get the areas ready. Cause once we, once they apply it, we don't want to have to blade it. You know, the landlords don't want us to either because that starts to stir up the dust control and makes it less effective. So.
And the process continues.
Yep. So it worked out alright last year. So we, we are gonna have, you know, the, the Highway fifty-nine project's gonna go on this year and they are gonna close Highway fifty-nine south and downtown here. So if you recall here a few years ago, that was a big problem. Cause all that traffic was finding its way around on our gravel roads and creating all kinds of problems. So um, once the DOT has a letting, they should let us know who the contractor is and when they're gonna do it. But then I think we need to be at the pre-construction conference, talk about how we're gonna deal with the traffic that doesn't follow the, the official detour. Yeah. Yeah. So cause the official detour will be the back road pavement. But the unofficial one is gonna be, uh.
A lot of people know the shortcut.
The gravel roads.
Yeah.
So we just need a motion to.
All right.
Motion.
All right. Sorry, Adam. All right. Any further discussion on the approval of dust control? If not, I'll call the question. I'll favor I.
Alright.
You oppose? Chair votes I.
And then item seven, good news. So we've got an offer for one point five million dollars in city bridge funding for, uh, uh, the, uh, Vale Bridge, one hundred and fifty-five. So so we'll, uh, I drafted a letter for the city of Vale and I assume that they approved it last night at their meeting. But, uh, to accept the offer, because it has to, since it's a city bridge, it's in their city, in the city limits, but it's on our foreign market road. It's our jurisdiction. So, so we're kind of co-sponsors, but, uh, but they're, they have to officially acknowledge acceptance of it. So I drafted a letter. I'll fill out all the paperwork and get it submitted hopefully today. So.
Is that the total cost?
Uh, it's probably gonna be closer to about two million total. That's everything. Uh, design, construction engineering right away. Um, so it'll take care of a big portion of it. And prices of, you know, as we saw with our box cover have actually started to kind of soften just a little bit. So my goal is to try to get this thing let about a year from now. Um, and then the Donna Reed Bridge would be probably in October of twenty twenty-five. So we don't have both of those bridges out at the same time. Both those paper roads.
Yeah.
Out at the same time. So.
Where's the one point five coming from?
This is coming from the city bridge fund. Yeah. You can see the cities are allocated bridge money. You know, there's this bridge money that comes to the state of Iowa. A portion of it goes to cities, portion goes to counties and a portion goes to the state. And then, so this is part of the city's bridge allocation. So it's kind of nice because it doesn't take away from any of ours. And then the, the additional money, you know, so that, that total estimate, Craig, that means some of that we're gonna do all the construction services we do in-house, but I just kind of threw a number, but construction cost, probably in that one point seven five. And so the balance of that will come out of our foreign market account. So to pay for that.
So the city of Vale doesn't have to pay anything?
No. It's our road.
Gotcha.
The state, uh, you know, back in two thousand four, so they think less than five hundred. Extensions.
Potivation less than five hundred?
Yeah. So it is ours to take care of. So that was good news.
Yes.
Uh, the only other items, uh, auction twenty-sixth March, uh, safety meeting and lunch on the twenty-seventh. And then I'm gonna be gone for a few days next week. So.
All right.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And, oh, one other thing I didn't have on here, but Tim Berry, uh.
Happy birthday, Tim.
Today's his birthday.
Oh, is it? Alright, happy birthday.
I, I, I didn't ask. There were donuts down this morning, but I didn't know what his birthday was. Uh, but anyhow, this is, um, my opinion, you know, he's going above and beyond the call, uh, and even accepting this challenge. But, you know, he's done our CDL, he does, he does our CDL training now. And so, you know, we have two employees that we hired recently that he's gone and worked through uh, the, the CDL training program. So he has to sign off and, you know, acknowledge that they, they've met the, they've met the criteria now to go and test. And so this is kind of what he put together.
For?
For, uh, for the.
For each employee?
For the two, for the two people, yeah, that he trained.
How long does that training take about? I mean, is it a couple of weeks or?
It depends on how much time they have.
Okay.
You know, there's no set time. I mean, it isn't, they just have a certain curriculum they have to complete and different people will complete that at a different time, you know, but over a two-week period, they should easily, if they have time.
They have study material and they actually drive?
Yeah, but I mean, these are all the test questions that they have to answer, you know, so they, they go through modules and then they, they answer all the test questions. So this is kind of his saying, yeah, here I did it. Here's the test.
There you go.
Here's what they did. And then, um, and then they have to, you know, yes, to sign off that they've had the, behind the wheel training, it's sufficient. So um, all of that. So, you know, this training can run anywhere from twenty-five hundred to here, a number of four or five thousand dollars a person to get trained and get licensed to take, to do a CDL. So, so it's certainly, it's something that I appreciate him doing that. He's doing a great job with it. Um, as far as, uh, training CDL.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's important they have that.
They gotta have it.
I have, I have.
Paul, we had discussed about getting on next week's agenda for the admin groups contract, yours as well. Would you prefer that being on your agenda? Or just us having it on our own agenda?
But wherever you want, you know, makes, it makes.
Are you gonna be here next week?
I won't.
That'll make things.
So, that's how I will, I will, uh, yeah. Well, uh, I, I trust you. Uh, it would be, it, it is important, you know, I, 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 I'd like to somehow do something for him. This is really kinda, you know, he's, he just kinda, but that's him. He doesn't complain, doesn't ask for anything. I'm just saying that it, it's, it's, it's a providing a real value to us.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
What's adding additional job duties at ease?
Yeah, he just kind of took it on here, you know, and, and we talked about it and decided that, you know, it's, there's not, I mean, it's, it is terribly difficult, but it does take time. You see that, you know, and he's doing a good job of it.
Very organized.
Yes, yeah, so, um. Hey.
Awesome.
Alright. People here, uh, yeah. I got a question. That, uh, dust control you put, I live in the city of Nella. They put it on and the county mania goes through.
Yeah.
And it's dusty. Come, at least later, go through there.
Yeah, you know, so, so with the dust control, you know, we try to blade the roads first and then put it on. Now, if you're in the city of Nella, we probably blade that road as we're going out there. Uh, this, you're still in the city of Nella, but I think we just kind of played that for them. Um, but if they know, if the blade operator knows it's been sprayed, um, they try to avoid bleeding through that until it gets to the point where they feel it becomes a hazard, you know, becomes unsafe. And then they'll blade it. So they don't, they typically and accidents happen every once in a while. You get a new guy that's in the blade, if you're a guy who's on vacation or sick, and he accidentally blades one, you know, so that does happen.
A couple of years.
Yeah.
Like going back a couple of examples. They had lines going in before, dusty.
Yeah.
And they put sand in here or so. That's dusty too.
Yeah. But gravel roads are by design dusty. There's nothing we can do about that. Other than we do try to work with the landlords and put the, you know, the dust control out there. Um, and it's, some years works better than others. It's not perfect. But, you know, if you're blading it, chances are it's probably something going on there that requires it, I guess. I, I don't know.
Three hundred.
You know, we've got a hundred fifty feet out there. Locations that I, I don't micromanage to blade out. Use good judgment. If you think it needs to be bladed because it's not safe to travel, blade it. And so.
Anyway, to contact the the guy that runs the blader?
Yeah. No, I mean, there's no problem. We, we're public, we work for the public.
Alright.
I don't have any problem with that. It's just, I would just ask the understanding that if it gets rough, it has to be bladed.
How about, you ever checked the price and if you put some tar down, well down and put pea ground a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, that, you can do that. I mean, it's very expensive. Um, but people do it.
Is that?
Not really the pea ground, the, the, uh, they'll do what they call cutback asphalt. And, uh, you know, again, it can get very expensive, but, uh, some people like to do that.
Well, who pays for that? The city pays for that or?
Uh, that.
Homeowners.
That, that normally is the home, any dust application is usually the home. In our case.
The city's paying for mine so far.
Yeah.
Cause you're within city limits, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you have any idea what the cost of putting that down?
Oh, I was thinking it was around like two hundred, and I was thinking it was like two hundred dollars every fifty feet. So people that are doing like, uh, it's, it's expensive. Cause I know the checks are in that, you know, couple of thousand dollar range usually.
They don't have to maintain that, right? Or you have to maintain that?
Well, we don't blade that then. We forget, they use the asphalt. We don't, you know, they cut back asphalt, which is an oil and sand. We don't like that.
So it gotta be cheaper than five hundred dollars to.
Some people, however, the downside of that is you have to understand that, you know, you couldn't have eighty thousand pounds of sand over that today as it's spring of the year. You know, all you have is this thin, you know, this thin layer of sand and, and oil. And so, you know, when you get the spring thaw, I've seen completely destroyed.
Why can't you give them a weight and then assign there?
That's a access to Manala where you're in a bad.
I come out and catch this highway right by the door.
Yeah.
If they can turn there, you can go around.
You probably have to take that up with the city, you know, because they have to post the, you know, weight, the weight restriction. Problem with those is that Ag is always exempt. So all that, you just get an exemption and they can haul.
There you go. Now you go out ninety thousand pounds.
Well, then you got, your white construction right beside you as well.
Back to the highway to the east, you have to go fast, right? You tell him, he drives that by, it ruined the road. It was probably get six inches shorter than the, to town. Southside, well, east way. They go around, you know, it's like, you know, you gave it. It's unfortunate.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to offer.
Ultimately, you're in some limits.
They are public roads and, and that's why we, if you're unusually restrictive, then the, you know, the other, the users of it want to know why they can't use it.
I mean, that was out that way, that was whatever.
Yeah, and that, that, that's something.
Go to the city.
City of Nella.
Right. Yep. Have you been to the city to discuss that with them?
Yeah, there. I, I heard there's a new mayor now.
Okay. Yeah, well, maybe, maybe you got a chance again. Try again.
Coriel, listen.
That's the new mayor.
Who was asking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I'd give it a try.
Well, they tried the last year.
Yeah. There's a new guy.
Oh, okay. Oh, sorry.
I got, yeah, I got a note earlier from him that, uh, they, they can't make it to the meeting at ten o'clock today. Uh, there's no point in coming unless there's several of us that can make it. Uh, they'll try to come up and try to reschedule this. It's too bad, uh, can't be an evening meeting, so everybody. They'll try to come up and try to reschedule this. It's too bad, uh, can't be an evening meeting, so everybody can attend, so. So it sounds like could everybody lined up because of work schedules and whatnot, so we'll table that, I guess, and. I did drive out there and I did look at it.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good.
Already.
The roads, uh, I mean, I drove a lot in the last week, great shape. I mean, it's.
Yeah, for coming after snow of that magnitude in a matter of a week or so later, but. It's just unbelievable.
It is a free pass. And so, you know, a lot of gravel, I mean, there's a lot of gravel left on them. We get that first rain, we'll find the spot. Trust me, it, it, it'll, there'll be some areas, but, um, you know, it, it looks really good. So.
I haven't seen a lot of gravel in my ditch, but yeah, there's a lot on the road too. It always looks worse than it is. Don't see a bear on the road anyways, must be all right.
And get a new motor grinner next week. It's the one that we pay for after the first of the year, after July first, that's coming next week. Um, and then, um, that's good news. Bad news is we got some problems. We got one, we had to pop the engine out and that went up to Sioux City this morning. Another one is probably going to have to have a transmission taken out of it. And the other one, um, we're still trying to figure out. So that all happened during the snowstorm. It, it, it's.
That snow was hard on equipment.
It's terribly hard on equipment.
Extreme conditions.
Yeah, twenty-two below zero and you're beaten up against the snowdrifts for twelve hours a day. Um, it takes its toll and this is pretty typical. We, we'll, we get through a snowstorm, we'll see stuff for several months after it. Where you just push the equipment really hard, um, but we'll get them all fixed up. Thanks, Paul.
All right, next, uh, on our agenda is set time and date for public hearing on land rent auction for Crawford County Farm.
Well, go ahead, Greg.
I'm going to say, so we're selling the process.
Okay.
Um, I think what we would. I guess we've made the all put to Crawford County Hunger Fighters to serve as the five oh one C three.
Couldn't get any, I couldn't get any movement with the friends of the fair or nothing. I kept talking to them and say, you got a form of five oh one C three and I just. I never hear anything back, so came up with an alternate plan.
And we just discussed this yesterday and last night I contacted the Crawford County Hunger Fighters and he's got an eight-person board. And certainly wanted to talk to them about, he wanted to talk to his accountant to see how that flow-through money all works. Um, had some questions, I guess, about the lease and. I told him that it's already been, everything's been approved by F S A. The lease was drawn up by our county attorney. And we just need to know what name of five oh one C three we're going to put on there. That's where we're at. And so he said he was going to talk to them and then let us know. I guess what I was maybe hoping was that if everybody's in agreement with that, um. You know, if we could, I got, I guess we really shouldn't just give us approval. We'll probably have to have a motion stating that that's what we want to do and without Crawford County Hunger Fighters giving. A commitment of yes. Probably something we need to wait or.
I don't, the timeframe is, I think we're good because we've had all the conversations prior to the fifteenth of March. For fifteen, to get this all lined up. So I think, or fifteenth of February, excuse me. So I think we're all right. I talked to Lisa Gallagher yesterday and she's almost ninety-nine percent sure it'll get approved. It just needs to have that, that part of the puzzle put into it, so. Craig and I were thinking kind of outside the box, what, what other five oh one C three would be beneficial to the whole county to receive that payment?
So it would go to C R P if that piece of the puzzle gets approved and then if Hunger Fighters, then they would be the five oh one C three to be.
That's why I'm confused. It has to be a five oh one C three non-provoked, but. I could go in there and slip my name on that because I'm a farmer and it'd be fine.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's the government rule, not ours, so.
Yeah, we can't fight that. So how will the Hunger Fighters get together, do you think?
Well, I think Warren was going to contact him via email, so he was going to do that last night.
Okay.
So I suppose the response that he gets back from each individual board member.
If that falls through, if anybody else has got any ideas. I don't know, TAP is a five oh one C three. I'm sure they probably, I don't know. I will, just, I think we just, and there's, we've got multiple contracts, so if the fair does. Friends of the fair get theirs together, we can still, wouldn't be as clean.
Do you have an idea of how much, like I'll say to all to Hunger Fighters, what proportion or what dollar amount they would?
Well, yeah, it's rough numbers. I mean, if you got three hundred dollars an acre in C R P payment, a hundred and twenty acres. Thirty-six thousand dollars, ten percent of that would be thirty-six hundred.
That's the current rate, was that ten percent what we're, so.
Yeah.
Be continued.
You know, win-win.
Yeah, good job of thinking outside the box, guys. All right, so we'll just keep this on our.
So we also, there also is other additional C R P contracts out there that still have, uh. Past tenants, it's named listed, so we'll have to work through getting those changed as well, though. And we can.
And after we tell those contracts come, do you write?
Uh, no, I think we can change them. I asked Lisa.
Oh, you can mid-contract?
Yeah, we can change that. I think we can, because otherwise he's in there for the next nine years, because most of them just got re-enrolled last year, so. But I think we can change that part, do an amendment to the contract, so.
Just doesn't change the C R P contract.
You know, yeah, it just. Yeah, it's just the person. Be like, you know, changing hands of ownership, the C R P contract still is valid, even at the farm's sole. I mean, they have right to buy back the contract.
So what do you say, Kate?
I don't, I, I feel very confident we're gonna get it on the pheasant recovery program. They, because Craig and I had to go in there the.
The last week they got after the meeting, right?
Two weeks ago.
Weeks, yeah.
One, we had to pick out spots for, uh, food plots and stuff of that nature, so.
All right, like we're going into this, then, uh, you probably originally thought, wouldn't you?
All the government work.
You guys are doing great. Appreciate all that, so. Eventually, we'll, sounds like we're on the right path though, so we'll just keep, keep it on the agenda until we have all the right answers of that. Alrighty.
I, I think we can eliminate the rent part of it. I think we're just gonna maybe put this county farm C R P stuff on there. That's how I, I think it'd be. Like, at this point, I don't see no reason to keep enticing people thinking we're gonna rent it.
Okay.
Because I think it's gonna get, it's gonna get into C R P.
I think, right, I think Lisa's word, word, it'll be approved.
Yeah.
Once we get it sent there. We just need to send it in. I just need to have that was.
That one piece of the puzzle that. You know, we had to think outside of the box to, I, I, I don't see. I don't know why they would say no, but I, that's up to them, I guess.
No, I think my initial conversation with him, he was just kind of like, is this true? Is this really possible that we get this money for actually, you know, not doing anything? I said, well, because of, I mean, the county feels pretty strong that it wants to go to a five oh one C three that does benefit Crawford County. And you guys do that.
Absolutely.
So, why not?
Absolutely, yeah. Good job, seriously. All right, so we'll just keep, keep moving on. Alrighty, discussion on juvenile court services internship program. Come on down. Your timing is perfect.
I thought it was gonna be late.
Perfect.
Uh, so I just have a big question, and I understand that that's probably a lot of, uh, gray areas, but. What we're seeing in juvenile court is just the, the new J C Os coming in from college and not having that hands-on experience. Uh, they do have that unpaid internship opportunity, which we do have and have had quite a bit of people come through, not only Council of Los, but Crawford County. It's just that when, you know, when reality hits and as a college student, you know, there's, there's that, uh, issue with no, you know, no paid, uh, internship and. She is, well, and this is just an example, but there's, there's a list of, uh, kids that are coming out that could benefit from an internship program to see if. Uh, and then this is, wouldn't be entry level, this would be, I want to be in this field, um. We wouldn't, um, I wouldn't request this if, if I didn't, uh, think that we were investing in the future. Um, and, uh, this, the, and what I envision is, is having a, uh, college student that has been through an unpaid internship. That shows that initiative, it shows that motivation, that drive. And then in college, knowing that, okay, because a lot of them, they say, okay, I want to go D H S side or if I want to go juvenile court side and, and they don't know. So that fence, I think, uh, would be taken away with, you know, us providing that internship. Juvenile court services, I, I've tried multiple times and the paid piece is just not there because of judicial budget. Um, but I completely, uh, understand that perspective. I've been around long enough to know that it's very rare for that to even happen. Um, but, uh, I also think that it's an opportunity for Crawford County or even just the, uh, attorney's office to get help with the internship as well. Because we have a lot of, uh, work with D H S through Martha, and Martha would provide some type of assistance or service from that as well. Um, so, uh, having the juvenile court and, uh, Martha's piece, it'll have D H S and juvenile court delinquencies to kind of look at, so. Um, first thing is, is having a list of duties, uh, making sure that they understand what's expected from, from them as far as through the internship. It being only a summer internship, uh, and having, um, just an expectation from not only the county attorney side, but my side. Um, this wouldn't be someone that just says, hey, come on, come on. We would actually have an interview process. We'd have, we'd go through the background and just making sure that. Um, what she needs, what we need, uh, or they need, sorry. A lot of my interns are females, so, um, so very rare males, but, uh. What we do understand though is that, uh, they benefit so much from those internships that they, when they do apply for those positions, they've got a. They're behind, you know, they're behind the eight ball and they understand exactly what's going on. Um, and then obviously there's more to learn, but that, that internship is shown pretty beneficial, so.
So is it paid or not paid?
I, I'm requesting that if, if there's, if we could, uh, sponsor that internship program, uh, it be paid. Um, not a, uh, a huge amount of money, but just enough for that, that, uh, individual to be, okay, I can, I can stick around and, and actually.
So how many hours a week would we be, uh, proposing for that?
I'd say twenty, twenty-five. Yeah.
So are internships required to be a juvenile officer?
No, I, I've been through when I was with Bart Grover when I was in college and I went through one in federal probation. I was paid in Des Moines and I was not paid here, which is completely fine, um, but, uh, but I benefited massively. With, with just the experience that I had with, with Glenn, so.
So you're looking at roughly three months, twenty hours a week.
Yep, twenty, twenty-five.
They be an employee of the county? Would it be a contracted employee? Would it be, I mean, I don't know, I'm just.
That's what I'm just trying, trying to look up some I O code. Because it's in a state office, I'm not.
Yeah, and I understand there's a lot of.
Nothing is simple. So do we provide, I mean, you know, then they end up on our work comp.
I definitely see a, a benefit to it, I guess.
Crossing the.
This wouldn't be every summer, this would be a.
Well, we dictate what summer would and what, when summer would.
The, the, the reach out, um, I know, uh, it'd be the pick, because I know I've had a couple reach out and one, one I would not have come through, because.
You mean the college students reaching out to you?
Yeah, so, and then we would ob- obviously formalize that more. We wouldn't have that. Right now, they just know of me through work and they would just, they feel comfortable reaching out. Here, we'd be a little more formal, um, applications, et cetera, et cetera, and, uh, have that opportunity for that person to.
What do you think, would they have to pay an hour?
That, and, and that's why the discussion, I just want to provide the benefit for it and then I can definitely run some, uh, or just run some questions. I'm thinking no more than eleven.
Okay.
Twelve maybe at the most, um, but, uh, it, it, yeah, it really, and it wouldn't be a solid twenty, twenty-five. It would be, okay, you're done, uh, today, uh, come back tomorrow or, uh, have a schedule for them. They'll have a caseload, they'll have a lot of that stuff, so.
I think there's just some red tape that we have to.
Yeah, this is a big question. This is something I will, I mean, I just hate this.
Dollar amount wise, but I mean, if it could really help your officer.
I think Martha, I know Martha's got some help right now, but even calling, uh, and there's a lot of, uh, D H S and delinquency information through that office, just as much as mine. So I think.
Both, we can figure out how to make it work correctly according to.
Absolutely. And, and a no is fine too. I just wanted to run this by you guys to see what you thought and I don't want it to be a, uh, yeah. How dare you ask? Well, it's, it's definitely, uh, we're in a time where it's changing, so I think, uh, more information is better.
Benefit of, if you can get some intervention into these. Younger. Adult, young citizens that maybe they won't end up in the adult system or in the mental health system or something like that. I mean, any additional help is probably well spent.
Well, that too, I mean, I see a lot of people that come through as an unpaid intern, stick around. Uh, they definitely stay in the Crawford County area, uh, if not neighboring counties, so we are investing into the services. Not only through the kids, but, uh, workers as well, so.
May, can you reach out to other J C Os and plan out if they've done that and how they budgeted or?
Talked to, no, they have not, uh, oh, Des Moines is the one that gets all the stuff, so I've got two J C Os in Polk County and, uh. And they haven't had anything. I haven't even looked it up. I think it's all unpaid, um, and it's through judicial if they do have it paid. This is, yeah, completely new monster, so, but I think, I, and if it can't mend, that's fine, completely understand, so.
I, I guess, Troy, I'm after, what we're all after is to find out how we can legally do this.
Right. Absolutely.
And I think, and we can move forward.
Give us some time.
Oh, you got it. All right, thank you, guys.
Very interesting. Sure, I was just hanging on.
I know, keep it safe.
Could that be under juvenile court services or?
I would think so.
Basically, so. Do you have, uh, Department of Public Health or D H S or something probably?
All right, so next we have discussion, uh, take action, appointment of the Charter Oak Township Clerk of Beth May Lincoln.
It's going to approve.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, so I'll call the vote, all in favor, aye? Any pose? All right, congratulations, Bethany, yes. All right, so then we also have a discussion. Smoking on the pan, okay. I can now sign that where I already put my J. I'm afraid it wouldn't get approved, so I didn't sign.
I wasn't afraid.
Just to introduce properly.
That's right.
Alrighty, just tell when you're ready.
Go ahead.
I mean, no hurry. Uh, discussion, take action, appointment of Charter Oak Township trustee Peggy Sue Henchen. And they both said they would do it, and so. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the appointment? I'll call the vote, all in favor, aye? Chair votes aye, uh, congratulations, Peggy Sue. I will sign those before I. Sign it, all right. Imagine that you've written on the top of my agenda, keep it rolling, so that's. I know it, but most of the time.
Were you able to last?
Not so, not so well.
Well, big, big discussion.
I need to get ahold of, I did next one. Unless you all don't have any questions, but you might.
Yeah, I think we.
I'm gonna get Tony on the line.
Megan, do you have contact info for Tony?
It's like I'm gonna have to bring cupcakes to the safety meeting. That's not my birthday. Maybe what I have to bring, I should probably start baking now.
So Dave?
I should make my new recipe. Everybody loves them.
I don't think so.
I can, I can never put them be, I think straight.
Well, I have, I don't know why, but it pops up on my calendar, different times when I open up my tablet.
Be on in a second.
Terry, we're back in the meeting, Bob. So you're running one, I think, right?
You're up. All right.
Soon as Peggy or as soon as Peggy, as soon as Tony gets on.
Big C, big C.
Big C. I'm glad they were both willing to do it.
You know?
At least for now.
So did you reach out to them or did they?
I did reach out to them.
Good.
Because they need a budget, so that needs to happen. Too sweet.
Yeah.
Township needs a budget.
All right.
So this next item is in regards to us transitioning to our new phone system.
Uh-huh.
And so instead of renewing um, our contract, we are requesting to not renew, but go month to month. Yes, case it goes over. Hi, Tony.
Hello.
All right. Welcome to our meeting. So we have some questions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Maybe.
I think, yep, hope and hopefully I got answers for you.
All right. What do we got? We're going month to month, uh, on the contract starting March twenty-fourth, correct?
Correct.
All right.
And the reason, just a really brief explanation on that is uh, Frontier has a kind of a rolling automatic renewal. So every year, the circuit renews for one year and we have to have them, we have to notify them thirty days in advance, which has been done. But then they switch it to a month-to-month contract. And the reason for that is once you switch over to the new service, you will no longer have that phone service with Frontier.
Okay, we are, remember discussing some of that about in December that we'd have to probably address this about this time. So.
So do we have a dollar amount for what that'll be month to month?
Twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty month. And then.
Which is a little higher, I believe, than what we're currently paying. Is that right, Tony?
No, you're talking about twelve, twelve fifty for the new, the new monthly service with KD?
No, I'm talking about twelve fifty for the new month-to-month with Frontier.
Oh, correct. Yep, yep. And it is actually our goal to have the service switched over and disconnected before they can bill a full invoice. So we're trying to time it. Yeah, Frontier has their game. Their game is you have to tell them thirty days before to not renew. And then when you tell them to disconnect, they tell us that it takes up to thirty days to disconnect the circuit. So we're trying to, we're trying to dance in that playground where we can disconnect and you would only be, you know, one or two days into the new month, which then will obviously would be a pro-rated amount.
Okay. All right. All right. Anybody else have any questions?
No, this is a project we've been working on changing over our phone system for a long time. It's just another step in that process. So. This is the final step in that process. Probably one of the final, yeah, one of the final steps.
Yeah, sort of the switch over and, yep.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Then month-to-month contract at twelve fifty, pro-rated for them.
This way, this is not necessarily pro-rated. This is just a twelve fifty month-to-month contract.
This is the month-to-month contract.
Right.
But they hope to have it.
Hopefully, yeah.
If we run into a month partially, that month would be pro-rated.
Right.
And it'd be pro-rated. So and they try to get it a couple of days into that new month. So they would just divide that out. So. It's not. Just make sure we have phone service until the new one's ready to go. So.
Yep.
It'll be okay.
Yep, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on the new uh, phone system and going month-to-month with Frontier?
Thank you, Tony.
Yeah, thanks, Tony.
No, no problem. Thank you.
All right. Uh, no further discussion. I'll call the motion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any pose, same sign. Uh, chair votes aye. So that has passed.
Thank you for, squeeze your signature on the customer area there, please.
Certainly. You going with your?
Thanks.
All righty. So our next item is discuss, take action on the signed novation agreement to transfer the NOAA lease from Crawford County Firefighter Association to Crawford County. Who's got that to discuss?
Oh, I think the county attorney had us put that on there.
Oh.
Want me to go get him, see if he's got it?
Sure.
I sat there. I always had to go. All righty. Moving right along. Keep getting all these messages and I'm just always wondering if there are anything to do with, with on my agenda. So far not.
Did you get an email with the agenda for tomorrow's IT meeting?
Those secrets on the court.
I hear it's everywhere. Morning, everyone.
Morning, Colin.
Hello, Colin. Happy Tuesday.
Happy Tuesday to you guys.
All right.
Happy Tuesday.
Oh, that's right.
Indulged today.
So I have on the agenda, the agreement from uh, NOAA to transfer uh, the lease rights off the tower from the CCFFA.
Who's NOAA?
The North American.
Atmosphere.
Atmospheric Administration.
The weather.
Weather, okay. Yeah, there's leases on our tower that uh, have, were originally assigned to uh, the Crawford County Firefighters Association. Uh, that was subject to that audit that came out years ago, uh, from the state. Um, since then, even though this novation, so this agreement then transfers those leases, uh, payment from the, instead of going to the CCFFA, they're going to come to the county. And that was the re, uh, one of the rulings of that audit that came out um, from Rob Sands' office. Um, and even though this is a long time after that uh, audit came out, the CCFFA uh, has been, whatever they've been paying, had been kicking that check over to the county. So they haven't been keeping the money.
That was gonna be my question.
They was. They're behind, actually.
Yeah, and Greg Miller will come up every, I don't know, I mean, Terry would know better, every now and again and and sign over uh, the rent checks. Or the lease checks.
Get along to get the check and bring it up.
Yeah, and this, this just cuts them out entirely and it goes straight to the county now. And it's been, it's been, it's been a challenge. It's, it's a weird agreement. They got, I mean, Terry came over to sign. It's just kind of, we didn't make this. It was sent to us as this is what we need to transfer it out to the county and it's been strange, but we're here finally.
All right.
And I need uh, the chair person's signature, middle of the page under Crawford County.
First.
Oh.
Sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Just for my, how much is that? What it, approximately what is that?
Four hundred and thirty dollars a month or something.
Four hundred and thirty a month?
I don't know.
I don't, the amount is not actually included in this contract. This is just a, a transfer of.
Name ownership.
Yeah, yeah, the ownership and not, not the amounts.
By the way, back in my Crawford County firefighter days, I think it's four hundred some dollars a month.
Yeah, Greg would know more.
Okay.
At the, at the end of the day, this is something that we're required to do based on.
Absolutely.
Everyone's been expecting this. It's just been.
It's been, I'd say, six years.
Process.
Rolling a boulder uphill.
So uh, the reason that we're behind in getting the lease payments is because NOAA is behind in paying them or?
No, I don't think so.
No.
I don't.
We'll get caught up.
So.
Well.
And then after this.
Yes, we will.
Yeah, you know, Greg?
Yes, we will.
Yeah, Greg, Greg understands and has understood that the checks come here. It's just, you know, you'll.
Okay, I just wanted to.
They deposit them and then they're gonna write, they, the first time they wrote us a check.
Okay.
Not NOAA, but.
Firefighters.
Yeah, CCFFA.
Yeah, all right.
Right?
All right. So I need a motion to.
Firefighters Association.
Authorize the signature to transfer the uh, NOAA lease to the firefighters over to Crawford County. Do you have a motion for that?
Motion. Second.
All right. Any further discussion on the uh, lease agreement? So if I call the vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any pose, same sign. Chair votes aye. That has been approved. All right.
Middle of the page. The one blank spot there, kind of second from the top.
Right there?
Yes.
Question for you.
Don't screw it up.
Nate was there.
Yes, and I missed, I missed it and I feel bad. Sorry.
I'm just curious. Is there anything that would prevent? Trying to, he's a state employee in a state office. How the county, I'm trying to reset. I don't know how the makeup of that. Could we hire, pay an intern? To be working in a state office under the county or is it something we almost have to hire and put that intern in your office or a different office, but still work under? Nate's, I'm just looking for any legal things that would prohibit us from.
And I haven't looked into that. I'll, I'll have to get a contact from Nate and work with someone from the state to arrange that. Um, this was, Nate approached me about a week ago about this, um, saying, hey, would I be on board with this because he, he wants to have a program out of his office, but it's hard to do, uh, especially in the summer with college kids who need to work for money. Um, and there are people who are interested. They just can't afford to take an unpaid internship. And so that's where this all kind of butted from. Uh, and that's kind of all the, I said, yeah, that sounds like a great idea. And that's kind of all the further it's been on my end, but I can look into all this stuff.
Yeah, I just, something that something would prohibit us from or how we need to align things to make it work.
So I think we see the value in it. It's just.
How to make it work. Yeah.
How to make it work.
Yep, yep. It's gotta make sense for the county too. So I will look into that and report back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, and I will get this sent off. Um.
Appreciate it.
Are you, as far as landfill contract?
Oh, it's done. I need to send, I, it's done. I'll send it out. Yeah, thank you for reminding me.
So we can put that on the agenda next.
Yes, yes, it's done. I'll forward it uh, for review and then we'll get it done next week. Thanks. Yeah.
Have we done, did you do the secondary roads group or contract yet? I mean, I know you.
We, we, did that one get done too?
Yeah, that was the first one we did, right?
Didn't, that one already, I don't remember if it came across the.
Oh, I don't know if it came across here, but we, yeah, we said.
I don't recall a time of the year.
It needs to.
Could you send us that one too as well?
Yes.
And we could put them both on the agenda.
Yeah. Park.
Yeah.
Secondary roads. So.
And they've both been ratified by the union group. I know the, I know the landfill one did because Spencer got ahold of me about it.
I saw that.
But, um.
Secondary roads, you guys just, I remember, right? You guys are like, sound good to me. I've called and brought it up.
They were gonna sign it after we signed it and approved it. Just put it on.
Yeah, I'll send you everything. We'll get it.
Because they haven't ratified it. I'm just saying, never mind.
We understand what you're saying, but.
Do you? Okay. Thank you for understanding.
Okay, I'll get those guys.
That'll be good.
Okay, I got my marching orders. Thanks, guys.
There we go. Thank you very much. All right. So now we are to our citizens' input. Uh, anybody else? Yep, because I know half a seat. Absolutely.
So I will try five minutes. So please keep track of it for me or ask lots of questions. So I get this for two minutes. So, the pipeline. I always envisioned like an old wagon wheel with all these spokes coming, if you can envision that. So the spokes are everything. I mean, from safety to bills to board of supervisors to ordinances. Anyway, yesterday another spoke came into my viewpoint. We had heard that Hancock County Board of Supervisors had a thing on their agenda about Summit and Bills. So in my mind, because I've been focused on Des Moines and all these bills going through, I thought, oh, they're gonna give their input on these bills. So I logged, went zoomed into it and here they're talking about invoices for the county inspectors getting paid from Summit. And I'm going like, okay, here we go. Brand new topic for me. So I, this gal, and she actually was on Zoom a little bit earlier, Christina Paradise.
Oh, I wondered.
Yeah, so she's with um, Snyder and Associates. Um, and she represents Hancock County for the inspectors. They, they also have eight other counties that they're working for. So Summit didn't show up to the meeting. Um, and I don't know why.
That's unusual.
It's very unusual. So I don't know what the deal was and I don't care and it's neither here nor there. But she was on the meeting and she did a presentation to the board about where they're at in their process as their inspector. So I wanted to um, share these. This is the PowerPoint that she gave to Hancock County. And then also these, so like yesterday afternoon, I went on to the IUB has their requirements for county supervisors and the inspection process. So that's, I just did two pages of this. I actually had one for time, but yeah, if you want.
I'll take it. I'll make a copy for him so I can have a copy or I'll make a copy for myself, whatever.
So the things that I didn't realize, I mean, I, like I said, this is a spoke that I hadn't, I was hoping it would never come to this. So it was like, that's way down the line. I don't want to worry about it. I did not realize all this stuff that had to be done pre-construction. And you're aware of it. And I know that you guys um, put the contract to Sunquist or contract, I don't know if that's a contractor. You assigned it to them. I have no idea where they're at, but I can tell you right now, um, I, I really would like as a landowner, I really didn't know if I had the authority to call Sunquist and ask them where they're at in their process. After seeing what Snyder and Associates have put together and hearing her talk, she said that they have hired, last November, they've hired a full-time administrator for this. And granted, like I said, it's eight counties, not one. So keep that in mind. But um, this person, it's a full-time, thirty hours a week. I don't really say that full-time, but I guess it is. But anyway. So they've been working on it and they are, I think she said like thirty percent done. They've got like three more months. What they're required to do for every track, not every landowner, every parcel, but every track. And in Crawford County, that would be a hundred and twenty-six tracks. They're required by the IUB to set up these templates and folders for each one. So she was saying there's like four main folders and underneath those, and this is all electronic. Underneath those main ones, there's like fourteen subfolders. So that when they get the information, like the easement agreements with the landowners, the topsoil depth, um, the, I'm not even sure, the whole list, the list is in, it's in both what the IUB put out. Yeah, I guess page two. So I mean, these are just the things that are required from the IUB to do. So they're getting this all input and so it's ready to go. Now you say, okay, well, if this thing does get per-permitted by the IUB, it'd probably be appealed and it still might be months, years down the road. But I will tell you, we've talked, how am I doing our time?
You're fine.
Okay, um, I talked to several. Keep it rolling. We've talked to our, not only our landowner lawyer, but other lawyers that have kind of explained this and it's kind of, we don't know how it's gonna happen, but I can tell you what they're telling us right now. If Iowa is called a quick take state, and I'm gonna say I'm not an expert on this, so please forgive me if I'm not a hundred percent have it down. But as a quick state, quick take state, um, once the IUB issues a permit with intimate domain, granted, they can actually, say they, they issued it tomorrow morning, Summit can come to this courthouse, issue a bond for all the intimate domain people that haven't been paid, issue that bond and be out digging in my land tomorrow afternoon. That's how fast it will, it could come about. And in order, like you're saying, well, they'll appeal it. And you're right, we will appeal it, but to, to appeal it, we would have to issue an injunction for them to stop digging. To issue an injunction means that we would have to put up a bond that would, um, if the courts found us wrong or they, they found for Summit, we would have to pay every day the loss of work that Summit suffered because we appealed it, which would be hundreds of millions of dollars. Now, you know, we have land as equity. We don't have, I mean, it's, the small guy in this is not gonna win. We know Summit has deep pockets. We know. It's, it's fought and paid for in Des Moines. I mean, we know. Um, so, but my point, coming back to this, is that we need to know where Sunquist is at on this. And are they able to, after reading through this and hearing Ms. Paradise talk yesterday, can they handle it? I mean, I know you guys, I don't know that when you, when you did the contract, that you read, but they knew what they were in for.
I, I respect you bringing this to our attention. I do know that we hired them initially and then we started having concerns also if they were able to handle what we. We, I think we brought Troy back up here and he said they were staffing them and stuff accordingly also. But it would also be time maybe to bring him back up there and just go through this with them again.
Right, and that's all I'm asking, to get a game plan. And the other thing with Hancock, while they were bringing it in, they put it part of their budgeting, and I don't understand how this works. I thought it was a pass-through, I know that the county pays the.
Budget for the expense and the revenue, so then it doesn't affect tax asking.
So it's a wash, but I didn't know what you guys, Hancock was concerned with that, so. They were concerned to make sure it's in their budget. And I can tell you unofficially, very unofficially, that right now their bill is about fifty thousand that they're owing the inspectors. So I don't know, I mean, I'm sure with a budget our size, that it would probably be easy to pass.
And that's eight counties, you said, fifty thousand is for eight counties.
Okay, so, um, I guess that's, and then the other thing that they did mention, that they are in board, they're saying, like, when they open the trench. They've been told that it will be like forty to fifty miles at a time, and we need, they're, they're planning on four to five inspectors per county. To be able to do this, because obviously as a landowner, I'm very concerned, because that is our last effort to save our land. From, I mean, they're the ones that are gonna be out there, we need someone strong enough to say, too wet, stop work. Someone who's not in summit's pocket, and I'm not saying, and I don't know Sunquist from Adam, and I am not saying that they would, but we. Trust me, two years ago, I would've said, Governor Reynolds, all our senators, no, none of these, these people would be for us. So, anyway, I'm my, I'm sorry. You know, I have no faith anymore, so I have to say that. So anyway, so yeah, so four to five people, and then this, like, these things have to be de- updated daily. There's a hundred and twenty-six tracks, I just wanna make sure that we know what their strategy is and how, how they're progressing to date. And what their, what their plan is for landowners, so. Yeah, I mean, I was shocked, I was like.
Good timing to bring Sunquist back in.
Absolutely, yeah, I would, you know, and like I said, I am not downplaying in their ability, I, I don't know them from Adam, but I just wanna make sure we're all. Ready to go.
Probably reach out to. They're gonna move out there next week.
Let's do it.
Just go over this.
We're going down, copies of that, so we'll have them on the agenda next week. Alright, anybody else, citizens input, you're up.
Well, uh, just a two-tiered justice system we got here.
Lonnie Mike.
Guys familiar with what I talked to you about, John Blum shooting my cats?
Yeah, I don't remember, was that before us?
That was like four years ago.
Okay.
What's, what's your name?
Lonnie Mike, last name Mike.
Okay.
But I called, back in, back in two thousand nineteen, I come home for a work job, Blum was walking around across by alley there. And he's, he owns a lot to the north, and he gun-shooting cats. And I called Raspason, Deputy Sheriff Rasp, he's also a police chief down there. It'd take days for him to get up there. And after a while, I just called nine-one-one, the bullets were flying, ricocheting, they got machinery in the grass there where you shoot the cats. Iron machinery, old machinery, and the bullets were ricocheting off here, hit them, going through the trees and everything else. I called nine-one-one about it, and nothing, nothing would come down. Another deputy sheriff or, Raspason never arrived, and then last summer. Or, what was it, a year ago, I was talking to, uh. Utility guy, Blum, it's his son, John's son, he cut my tree down, I was trying to find the work order. Well, he got mad, told me he was working across the alley from John Blum's lot, he got mad, said, better at least I left. Then I went over town to talk to somebody else who worked for the city, and he come up to me, and he said, get out of here. I said, I'm just looking for somebody, and then he started in on me about cutting the tree down. I said, well, we got organs here in town, get landlord two weeks of notice, they removed the tree. I was gonna save for fireworks and stuff, while they hauled it out, I was gone that morning, they hauled it out. Tree, they wanted to cut it down, well, he got me for harassment, for it, he come to me, he got me for harassment. And I went to her county, talked to county attorney, and she went in, she said, why give me thirty days? I said, why give me thirty days, the city clerk, Lori John, gave me permission to talk to him too. I said, I got permission to talk to him, why you give me thirty days? And that's what COVID is going on, I didn't wanna be locked up in jail for thirty days, so I just played guilty, I said, screw it, play guilty. And that, and that deputy sheriff, it's a different one, he come out within, uh, he come out the next day, to serve me. To never serve John Blum, after calling nine-one-one four times on him. And talked to the Raspason before, Raspason always wanted to say, well, I just talked to John, just talked to John. He's always up there shooting, and so, every, every couple of weeks he'd be up there shooting, and there's a septic tank up there, an old sister, there's like six or eight cats in there. He shot, he just dumped them in there. And Raspason, I didn't go look at, I said, do you need evidence to look at him and stuff? I said, he, he's gotta be charged or something, he's already been warned time after time. Cause I got warned one time, and I get thrown, almost thrown in jail over, and fined two hundred and eighty bucks or something. But then last summer, my daughter was at my house, and she started all the casing down there, and I kicked her out. And she went up here, talked to the sheriff department, we were talking up there, and they were down there within minutes about it. They come down there and talk, I told them what the deal was and stuff, and she, well, they couldn't understand her, cause she was pretty well drunk. I said, yeah, and then they left, two cops, two different patrol cars, and they left, about an hour and a half later, they come back down again, questioning us. I said, no, we didn't do anything, I didn't do anything to her, I just tried to protect myself when she was coming at me. I fight this whole life, and she, her boyfriend come down, got her and left. But I only, I only took less than an hour for them to do that, but probably a couple of hours for both. Why are there two, two, uh, levels of justice around here, I don't understand either. When they let John Blums, the head of the oversight on Zonia, is that why, cause he's in the city council or in the government or?
We get him in here, brought Raspason to come in?
Yeah, I liked to talk to both of them, Stankouer then, I don't know, was Stankouer instead of deputy sheriff? Or set up a meeting, I'll come back up?
Set up a meeting maybe, would we rather do that?
I don't, I don't understand why there's two, two different systems.
Be nice to get to the bottom of it.
And I had, and I, Biden didn't involve a gun or whatever, I had to get rid of my guns. And John's still carrying his around in his truck. I just don't understand why Raspason, well, why didn't you go check it for the cats? Yeah, I just talked to him, I'm just talking, that's all you wanna do, is talk to John.
That's.
That's all happening within the city limits of Manila.
But still be involved with deputy sheriff, the sheriff, don't the sheriff come down on?
Well, part of that is Raspason is hired by the city of Manila also, should've came as their employee, not. But here we are, trying to decide how.
For me, Lonnie, if you really want to look into it, you need to get the police report. You need to talk to Sine, he probably sounds like more of a civil case. I mean, as a board of supervisors, I don't really know what you're asking from us. I think it's something, this sounds like.
He's a police officer.
Crawford County, then he's a legal.
That does seem like a little, you know, at that point in time, I think.
The sheriff, yeah. We don't control the sheriff department, we control the budget of the sheriff's department, not the sheriff's department.
So I mean, to me, it sounds like a personal legal matter that I would be, I'm not telling you what to do, but requesting. Police reports and, and talking to legal counsel yourself of what happened. Because we can't, can't sit here and decide anything, we don't know the police report, we don't know the legalities and the charges and the.
The nine-one-one call, where you called in to nine-one-one and that there was no response, you know, really get the information. And then I think we should, you shouldn't have a meeting with Stan Keller, the boss of that department. Because we, as elected officials, he's another elected official, we don't interfere, this kind of, kinda like swimming in our own lanes, you know, they. So, uh.
So, yeah, it remains, it's in the city limits, is there an issue that needs to be addressed through the authority having jurisdiction? Even though they might have called in outside resources to assist.
Who you say the new mayor is?
And you're right, I mean, you're, they hire.
The initial response was it been the city limits of Manila. Regardless of what Roger did, he apparently called in, everything should've, everything should've gone through the city of Manila. With the, they are the authority having jurisdiction.
But Roger never come out of any of these incidents besides one John Blum, there's always another deputy sheriff come out.
Yeah, so they call. Yeah, I don't.
We have to get probably right down to exactly, I think where we start is when you called nine-one-one. And the response you got from that, and maybe the question is, why, well, when you call nine-one-one, you're gonna get the sheriff's department. But how, how does, how do you get ahold of the city, you know?
Nine-one-one dispatch should've gotten touch with the, the, uh.
City.
Manila's PD.
We'd have to see the chain of how that went, and just kind of get, I think that's where you start though, is when you first called in. To see what the response was to that.
How long ago has this been, you said three years?
Uh, I think it was two thousand nineteen, twenty, four years ago, four years or less.
I just don't know, I don't, kind of, Dave, I don't know what we could do to.
Cause it's in the Manila's city limits, it's under their jurisdiction.
It's a legal matter.
Go get the nine-one-one report, how long, how long to keep those for? You go down to the dispatcher down here and get that, is that's where?
This sounds like a legal matter, for us to make any decisions, we cannot.
What you say you hold, hold budget for money, we got too many police cars in the way, too many police.
We're working on that.
Go by here, at least.
No protection then? No protection?
I, I don't know protection, never asked for protection, yeah, I never will. The same people just use the police department for their own grudges and all, so, means they put their life in danger all the time. Well, I don't know, we only used to have one, just a couple officers up here in Crawford. Now we're getting more officers and more crime. What, is there a connection between that?
I don't know.
Sounds like a legal matter that you don't have to.
I would probably seek legal advice, on that matter.
Call Cory though, and kinda. Uh, cause he might not know about any of this going on, and maybe he can help, I think he's where to start. And then get your, to show Cory that you've made these calls, just to have that backup, uh, and I think that's gonna help you a lot, so. But honestly, they should have it for more than a couple of years, I would. Well, let us know why you come out.
Alright.
Alright.
Alright, bye.
Very much.
Have a good day.
You betcha, you too. Alright, citizens input, anybody out there? Alright, come on up.
I have a couple of things actually.
Alright, um, have a seat.
Concerning the conservation. We lost a member, Ken Huntley, path away. Um, in past years, Chris has thought that the board has come up with some. One to appoint.
There was an application process, right?
Right, um, we weren't sure if we were to advertise that we're looking for someone. Or I know a lot of times it's been, oh, I think this person would be good, so you talk to them. Ken was from West Side, so now the West Side of the county doesn't have a representative.
The East Side.
Oh, I'm thinking West Side area. Yes, the side of the county. Right, um, so we don't know if we should find someone from the Vale West Side area.
If you can.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're limited by interest.
If nobody's interested in that area, then, yeah. Seek other, so then we put it on our.
So I guess I'm asking if the conservation board, if we should seek out someone.
We could put it on.
Do you have a Facebook page? That's a good place.
That's a great place.
Yeah, we can put it on our website too, the county's website, if you. Put something together or whatever.
Thing that would happen is that more than one person would, uh, see it and apply, then there's that application process.
Mike, Mike used to be interested years ago, and he lives in Vale, so I mean.
There you go.
I don't know if he's still, but that was years ago, he was interested, so.
Yeah, maybe, okay.
Yeah. Have to start.
Did they fill out any applications on the county website? Would we be, um, they just had to print them off and bring them in?
It's not like an electronic.
Submit deal.
Well, it's probably PDF, they could email it to, say, me or Mary or Jody out at Conservation or whatever.
Okay, either way. And then the other thing I'd like you to consider is. Chris was basically told what the raise would be. And secondary road was told what the raise would be. And they had the opportunity and they talked, and now their raise is higher than. What it was supposed to be. And I am thinking.
Are you referring to the secondary roads, union negotiations?
Are they union, I didn't, okay. Um, I think Chris should be comparable to them, I mean, he's a department head. We have seven full-time employees, so it's not like we have, you know, fifteen, twenty heads or whatever. Um, I'd like you to consider that Chris's raise be pretty equivalent to what the secondary roads raises. Are as like heads of their department under Paul. Chris doesn't know I'm here, so, and, and then our people have been paid underneath him. And I would, I would like to suggest they kinda get a percentage of what Chris is earning. Instead of, I don't know even how they came to a price of what they would be paid. So I would just, I mean, I have a list, but if you discuss it, maybe.
This year is, it hasn't been across the board, and is a cash deal, not a percentage of anything. Cause this is an opportunity to bring them lower-paid employees a bigger percentage of a raise.
This would actually be that way, if you gave Chris the raise and then gave percentages. Out.
The percentage is of Chris's.
Of Chris's salary, it would give those people.
Deputy status, so.
We're skinning the cat the other way, where we're a dollar amount, works the bottom up.
Right.
At a higher percentage than what top down.
If you make more, this percentage, your raise is.
Yeah, I just, I mean, here's the, just an example of X, Y, Z's employees, that employees making. Say seventy-seven thousand a year, and employees making. Fifty-three thousand a year, if you give them each a twenty-five-hundred-dollar raise. The top employee is only getting basically a three-point-two percent raise, and the bottom employees get four-point-six percent. To try to get them raised up faster, I just, I.
But it still shows a lower.
Well, you're.
I'm not talking about, they get a pers- yeah.
And they're deputies though, in that kind of.
I mean, they're not really deputies, but, I mean, right now, they make a percentage of what he makes, but I think it's a little low. I mean, we have. Both of our rangers also have law enforcement, which I think is a bonus. Um, we have. Well, Kelly, who's been there, she has, you know, her degree. Bryce has a degree, Nate has a degree, you know, Nate does way above and beyond. Even what his duties require as far as mechanical stuff, and I don't know, I just think. as far as mechanical stuff. And I don't know, I just think in comparison to Chris, they, they need to, we need to bump those guys up a little bit.
Do you uh I, I have to double check, but what, uh, I mean, we have two that are actually living in houses at our, on our facilities. They don't pay rent on those. Do they?
No, they pay utilities.
They pay utilities, so.
And any extra, like if they want.
Wifi and stuff like that, right? And are those the Rangers that have the houses?
A real nice benefit.
But I think they should make at least seventy-five percent of what
They are currently tied to Chris though.
No, no, no.
No, none of them are. No.
Seventy-five percent total. I agree with your, like, cause I mean, if you put your, I mean, rent and, I don't know, just conservative four hundred a month.
That's real conservative.
That's.
Well, I don't know, I'm talking to Greg.
No, I know.
I just try to be fair and fair statement. That's not additional.
Right.
Forty-eight hundred a year. So I, I mean, that's just struggles. If everything was apples to apples.
It'd be easy.
Life would be a lot easier.
It would be. And years on the job and, you know, uh, there's, there's not any uh job performance that everybody's ever doing. You're coming in and saying that they do more, that's good to hear. You know, we have no idea if they're doing less than they're supposed to or more than they're supposed to. Everybody's getting the same raise. And that's always been hard for me too, but prior to from you that they're going over and above, that's a good recommendation.
And like Bryce had a young man working with him this last summer who you might call kind of a troubled young man trying to find his way. And he is turning himself around. He's more dedicated to getting his college done. He's kind of been interested in possibly going into conservation. He, he's been a really good influence. So I guess we've never had an opportunity to come and bargain about anything. We just go with whatever we're told to do. And it's hard to sit at the table and say, well, sorry, that's all we can do is do what they tell us. So new thing for me too.
There we go.
You know, and like I said, Chris doesn't even know I'm here. I just thought, I just wanna.
Good for you. Thanks.
Well, good to hear.
Absolutely. I love it when somebody's got good things to say.
Hear the boots on the ground with being on the.
Well, you're doing your job as chairman of the conservation.
Absolutely.
I was in Mexico last one.
Otherwise I'd hit you up with this. Then maybe I wouldn't be here, but.
No, it's probably better coming from you.
Yeah, I think that's.
For to see that the board is, has concerns or wanna take care of the well-being of their employees.
I mean, there's other non-union groups that get the opportunity to talk to the board. So it makes sense.
You know, that kind of fell into the category of that's why we always done that, so we just think going in the same way and.
Right. A lot of time to say, well, they get the raises because they're the professionals that have the college degrees. We have them. And we have years of experience on top of that. So that's where I'm coming from.
I get it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for listening.
Absolutely. That's what we're here for.
I'm gonna keep giving my cousin Steve a hard time.
Every chance I get.
Like it's your job. Thank you. All right. Dan, you're the only one that's out there that hasn't.
I have nothing.
You're good? Thank you. I asked in Zoom land and nobody wanted to answer. Everybody's good, I think. So, all right, I think we're down to the part where we need to motion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Turn off the light, this meeting, and then turn. Thank you for that, for your input. Now we go.
Cause I'm not gonna wait around for that.
Yeah.
Two hours for her.
All right, let's get, cause she's gonna be at lunch.
Yep.
I'll just grab my little folder here with what I've got.
You said the one too.
Oh, Roger's here.
I've been hiding.
We have a dirt.
Well, yeah, I think this man, this was just a